We will call this meeting to order. This is the regular meeting, February 15, 2022 of the Harrison County Board of Education. We'll stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance, to the right, the United States of America, and to a republic of rich standards, one nation, and our government, indivisible, liberating justice, and struggle.
If there's no objection, we will move the superintendent's update to the first item before special recognitions and presentations. Any objections?
No objections.
Stutler?
Thank you, Mr. Hamrick, for that. I have several things on the superintendent's update, and I know there's things weighing on people's minds about masks, and this board has been so generous and allowed me to make that decision. And I just wanted to make an announcement. On February 21st, we will be going mask optional in Harrison County. That's really all I need to say about it. It's been a tough road, and we're gonna just move on from that. So, starting the 21st.
What if there's a breakdown in the school of a large number? What do we do?
We work with, we'll work with our health department and look at those numbers and make decisions based on that right now. And I have been in contact with the health department. So, all right, we're gonna go, I'll start with the curriculum update, and I believe we'll put the special ed monitoring under that since it falls under curriculum for the superintendent's update. So, yeah, Suzie Miller would like to just, we had our monitoring week before last. They were here for a week from the state to monitor for special ed.
So, this process happens every four years. So, it was our year. They randomly select schools to go to, two elementaries, two middle schools, one high school. And then they also request a lot of things from me at the county office. So, some files, different things on our finances that we submit through special education. And then they give us that report. I haven't received the official report from the state. All I have is our exit with them that they shared with Dora and I. But the great news is, is our elementaries, so Salem Elementary and Norwood Elementary had 100% of a compliance with their monitoring. And in fact, they were very pleased going into the building, friendly environment. We are, we are conducting a full comprehensive services to all students in special education, and they were very impressed with that, the display there at the school. So, that was wonderful. And in a county our size, that's almost unheard of. At our middle school level, it was really the same thing. We had one minor infraction of a student had just moved in, and they had the meeting scheduled, but they said again, it was a perfect record at both middle schools. So, our middle schools were Mount near Middle and WI. And again, in a county so large, they were really impressed with our services that we provided there, comprehensive. Our high school was Robert Seabird. And so there, we had a couple minor things to correct, and it was mostly around transition for students. So, when they get to be 16 and in high school, we do that transitioning for after school. And so some of that documentation wasn't on all of the IEPs, or we had made an attempt to call the, the agency to come, or the parent, and we were lacking that signature. So, we've already kind of put in place to work on that. And we're gonna roll that out countywide. I figure it can't hurt for all the other county, the other high schools to hear that. As far as on our level, we had some minor things within the budget. So, just looking at some paperwork, putting in POs correctly and not having those dates, it was very minor things with us here, but it's more that paperwork. So, as my first monitoring, I was really pleased, and I think Dora was, they were so complimentary of our co-taught classrooms. You know, they liked to go in and not know who is the special education teacher, who's the regular, and they could not tell. And we had a lot of compliments on that as well. So, it was a really nice visit.
With our special education, students in high school, I know, like, when they're finishing high school, like, I know there's programs out there like Job Squad that places them, like FBI, different things. Do we, do we have that? Do we have other programs out there to help with placement or to get them work or housing, to help them out at their high school?
Yes.
Some needs we do offer.
And division of rehab services is probably the largest that we use. And so we try to get them involved right at that early stage. So, eighth grade to ninth grade is when we address that transition piece. And then we, you know, we really request that they can attend as many meetings. Once the paper, the parents fill out that paperwork, then they contact the parents and work with them. But there, you know, we always welcome them to come to the, the school. I will say with COVID, some of those services were slowed. So, them having enough people to come and meet with the students, but that's probably our largest that we use. And then they help facilitate even things like filling out job applications, taking them to those jobs, helping with transportation reimbursement. They also help with students attending technical school or even college. So, you know, they, it's really a nice, big, comprehensive thing that the IRS provides for us.
Can you tell me exactly what schools we have co-taught classrooms in?
Every school.
Every school?
Every school across the county offers a co-taught scenario.
Okay. So then why is it so difficult to get co-taught scenarios in certain schools with certain kids?
I'm not sure if I'd say, I'm not sure if I know how to answer that. So, we offered, and some of that is based off the need and what their services are designated by the IEP. And so we look at the, that and the service that needs to be provided and where that service needs to be provided.
All right. Okay. So, why can't my daughter get a co-taught classroom?
Well, that would be a discussion at what her, her needs are and what we need to do.
We've had discussions, we've had many discussions, many discussions. So, I just wanna leave that there.
Any other questions?
I will say at the exit conference, the group that was in visiting, what did they have? Five people? They had two and then several teams. But the schools were very welcoming, and they did speak with some parents and students at each of those buildings. Mainly, they addressed, at the high school level, they met with students and parents coming into the high school. So, they were complimentary that the school was very inviting and the team was very welcome.
And it was a week of snow delays. So, that coordinating that, and they were very, we worked together quick with Dora to tell them what time they could be there so they could get there and know the students were there, because they observed in the classrooms. And like I said, they talked to the parents, talked to the teachers, talked to the principals. So, it was, it was a rough week getting that going, but they were, they were very accommodating to us. So.
Thank you. Next up for superintendent's update, I wanted to address the facilities. And I have Ken Wikey here. There's been concerns about our secure entrances in our buildings. And Ken has an update for wherever at with those.
Sometime ago, I came in front of you to talk about trying to get these controlled entrances finished up. And you know, my approach is not building a whole other entrance costing $800,000 or anything. It's using existing space. And we've been quite successful in doing that. I know the board's been supportive, and I appreciate that. And when I approached the next build at Nutter Fort, I had estimated around $75,000 apiece, because I've been doing this for a while. However, as everybody's seen, construction prices, everything's gone through the roof. So, we had a meeting with Rasher Engineering, and I also met with Mr. Lopez and Danny Dennison. And what we're gonna do, what we did at Lincoln High School, if you remember, our people did the outside part of that entrance. And to save on cost, the electrical work will be done by our staff. So, it takes, it takes almost $11,000 off the price. So, you see the final price is roughly almost $93,000. So, we could take $11,000 off that, but I know that you only budgeted 75 per school. So, we'll need about eight, eight per school, so about $16,000 more to get this project started underway. And I'm hoping we can get that done.
Who's gonna bid the project?
Thrasher is going to bid that out for, you know, separately.
They're gonna bid it out to other towns?
Correct.
How many more schools do we have that don't have secure entrances?
As I discussed before, we have South Harrison. You have a brand new school that has a secure entrance, yet the other two schools, one being attached or not. I like to concentrate getting those two done. So, that campus is done, Schenston's done, and that will leave us with the Bridgeport Campus. And I have plans for that, too. But logically, looking at it, I like to do Bridgeport. I've been doing this job for nine years. But South Harrison, we have a school that's secure, attached to a school that's not secure. So, I like to work on South Harrison after these two are completed.
And South Harrison, take longer for officers to get down there?
Correct. We only have, we only have one assigned, as you, as you would know.
Is it your desire to possibly look at that for the upcoming budget, to complete these secure entrances that he's been working on for nine years?
Yeah, I have, I have drafts for all of them. It's just it comes down to funding. That's what it comes down to.
There's a couple on here that are wish lists, I guess, as well.
I think in Bridgeport, maybe put that on there. So.
We should do it.
All right.
Yeah, I, I think it needs to be done before eight years. And we've been dealing with eight years. It should have been paid for and done.
So, so what's what? You have South Harrison, Bridgeport?
High school and middle school.
Yeah.
That's all we have.
Those are the ones that we can work with easily. Like North, I don't have a, I don't have a solution for Northview. I don't have a solution for Norwood without adding on building. I'm trying to handle the schools that we could use existing space to get completed. And then we can start looking at the, the harder schools that we can't easily secure without building in addition and having some, you know, cost, a lot of cost.
So, the four that you know are all, the Bridgeport, Bridgeport Middle, South Harrison, South, they are gonna be average this cost?
Yes.
So, we should put that at least?
About $400,000.
A line item, and then another line item for what are the other schools?
Norwood, I don't have an easy solution for. I do not have an easy solution for Northview. I have a solution for Adamston, if that school's still there. I would have to go through the rest of the list, but those four, I just told you, we can get this done.
Adamston, you take off the list.
Okay.
So, really, you're looking at two that would be outside builds?
Correct.
I, I think the four that need it should be immediate.
Thank you.
Are you looking at probably about the same cost?
Unfortunately, because.
About $400,000?
Right, because the materials have, have gone up significantly.
So, we'll, we'll look at budgeting or trying to find the money to take care of those.
I agree.
So, Mr. Wikey can continue.
Now be the time, please, if we save $2 million in.
And salaries.
And salaries on the new build, then we might as well.
Take care of it.
Take care of these problems.
Because I do get, people talk to me in Bridgeport, why not Bridgeport, why not Bridgeport? And I try to tell them, I look at things strategically, it came from law enforcement, and you look at the areas that are outlined. And I really want to get those secure first. But every school's important, every child's important. And I really like to have these builds done.
You've really thought out of the box to make these work. So.
Thank you. I have.
We're looking at it. Thank you. Look at all, just doing all four of them. And then next time you come back, maybe it's with a solution for the, the ones that are outside builds.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wikey. I do not have anything else for superintendent's update. Oh, sorry. I forgot, Mr., I tabled Mr. Lopez. That's happened then before. But that was an accident. I apologize.
This is Robert Seabird, box circle, and the cost, the cost estimate that Thrasher's has put in place. I'll let you all look at that. And if you have any questions, I'll answer those.
Now I'm happy.
Okay. So, you can. You can generally see what, what the cost is. It was, there was a to be determined in last year's budget of $25,000. And this is a little bit more than that. So, I'm presenting that to you so that you all can give me a yea or nay if you want me to just move forward with bidding this project out.
Well, I'm glad I didn't see where the parking lot is. Now I see it. It's in the yellow.
Correct.
You're thinking, oh, wait a second, this is just a circle. Where's the handicap? So, where is the handicap part?
It is the area closest to the bill, the building, the front entrance.
Okay.
In the yellow. Correct.
That, that's right.
Is that the yellow?
So, that's adding one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, 10, 11, 12, 13, 14, 15, 16, 17, 18, 19, 22 parking spaces in the front.
And moving a light pole and doing some, yeah, other, other things. And that's also blacktopping the entire circle as well, that you see in kind of a pink shade.
What are you gonna do? Isn't there a drainage system in the middle that's from?
It's already, it, there's no drainage issues, because that was one of the first things I wanted to make sure.
So, it was, it was in there, but.
Yeah, yeah, that's correct.
Now, on the edge right there where there is grass, and I see, like, right where the school is, and you see full pavement, yellow, then it goes pink, and there's a school. Is that a rail right there, like those black lines?
That's a fence. That's a fence. Goes all the way over.
Right, yeah.
Yeah, the grass.
It's not a fence there.
Yeah, it's such a wooden fence.
Well, what not, I'm looking at the whole school wall there.
I'm gonna pull it up here.
I guess I was.
Then there was a wooden fence.
Well, if you're looking at the, the main entrance is about, in the centerpiece, about right here. So, that's the, the main entrance where you would be going into the office.
Mr. President, I would say that we move forward with, you know, putting this on an agenda to get some courts done, to get this taken care of.
I'll say that.
More money?
Please place on the next agenda.
With one exception, what I was trying to get at is, when you come out of this parking lot as it is right now, there's nothing to hold on to. I was just, see how that black line is. I was just hoping that was a handrail. And if not, if we could put it there. You know, like, you pull in and you park and you cross, and then it, right here where this little dark line is, the guy was just a handrail. Right now, there's nothing there.
To help to get into the building. That's something, is that something our maintenance department could look at? For you, I mean, after the project was done, to put that handrail in?
You're talking to a pretty good distance from that circle to the front doors.
You're talking about for hand.
You can't put a handrail across the road. I understand, but.
I hear where the building is, once you park and you cross the new pavement, the whole way into the school, it's still quite a distance.
Right.
And I'm saying right here where there's no building and there's grass, if you just put a handrail, so when someone parks on a handicap, I mean, I'll just be honest with you, I still think you're not gonna school with this. But that's how it is in most places, like Lewis Parking Lot at Grover's. You know, there's, you can't put a rail, the hospital. So, all I'm saying is, if I could get from that parking place across this room and there's a rail, I could get right in. And I know a lot of other people could, too. Or even if they are handicapped, it just is just safer. And.
And we can, what we'll do is, well, when we look at that, we can, we can take a look at ADA regulations, and, and we can have the architects also look at that and see what we can do to add that.
Yeah, yeah. I mean, definitely get this done. I just thought that was a railing in the pitch. That's why I asked.
Well, if it's something that our welders can do, we can assemble that later. But it'd be nice to have those plans and get them approved, and they'd be in place. And then we could, we could top that project off with the railing. Okay?
Thank you, Mr. Lopez. Sorry that I missed you.
We had our meeting today, Nick Ward and everything went well, you know, for victory. No, it's really coming together. It's.
When do you think we can get in to see it? I mean, closer, maybe April, first April meeting?
We took Laura's group in today. He'd been through almost.
Because I know they all want to see the building.
Well, I mean, I can, I could set that up.
Okay.
We could do it earlier. It's really taking shape.
Okay. Would you like to see it?
Another month, maybe, you'll really be able to visualize it even better.
If you find a day.
Yeah, we'll, we'll.
Okay. Thank you. I'm finished. Yes.
Brings us, no special recognition, presentations, brings us down to delegations. We do have several delegations. And free on the mask mandate, you're still afforded your time to speak. If you wish, five minutes. Mike Wolf, if you still wanted to speak?
Yeah. All right, does the clock start? Yeah, it's already gone. Anyway, where to begin? I guess I take that and turn it over for a minute. I wanted to say sincerely, from all the parents, you heard the applause, thank you all very much. I'm not anti-mask. I'm not anti-vax. I've always been pro-common sense and pro-science. And I want to say thank you. I don't know who ultimately made the decision. But I did just get something pop across my newsfeed, which prompted me to still come. I saw that Kanawha County, effective today, at a meeting today, made masks optional. And I know we're saying the 21st. But I'm asking you, imploing you as a parent, I don't know what it takes. I'm not into the, the procedure, protocol, whatever. But I'm petitioning you as a board to, if you could, to take a special vote of some sort tonight.
I have to stop and say, we can't. It's not on the agenda.
You cannot.
Not by law, we cannot take a vote. So.
Okay, so there, there's no vote. But.
Correct.
So Kanawha County had it already planned. But I was just saying, I was just trying to figure out.
It will be on their agenda. We cannot.
What, the two?
It takes us three days to place something on the agenda.
Okay. Again, I said, hey, I'll just potentially, like, you know what, to a, like, I was like, Monday versus Wednesday doesn't make a big difference to me, you know, you know. So, but again, it was worth asking. Again, I thought, I don't know the procedure protocol. But I would just, again, say thank you all. And I mean, that's really it. I'm gonna get out of here.
Thank you.
Jim Machete?
He's a little nicer than I'm gonna be, because I've tried this before. So, I worked pretty hard on this. I don't think you deserve any thanks for what you're doing. It should have been done two years ago. So, here's how my speech starts. Thank God that the coronavirus decided to take off on Sunday so that 100,000 people could watch the Super Bowl game without a mask. But guess what? Shame, on Monday, it came back and school kids are back in the mask. I'm not here tonight to ask you for anything. I'm here tonight to remind you of the damage and harm that you've already done to these students over the past couple of years with your school mask policy. My previous efforts with you have been fruitless. They went nowhere. You've been unwilling to consider or make any changes. You've done this for the past two years. Anything now is a little too little, a little too late. Masks weren't ever necessary for the kids, and they aren't needed now. There's kids in schools that know nothing but the mask. That's all they've ever gone to school in. They've never seen their friends. And that's sad. Your policy wasn't ever based on any sound evidence, data, or research. Sadly, I doubt that anyone in this room has any knowledge of what's really happening, with the exception of Mr. Daugherty. I think he took a, a real sound effort in trying to get something done. You are all responsible for the harm that's been done to these kids, the physical, the mental, social, emotional, as well as the educational. And you're going to see some of the results now, and you're gonna see more of it as time goes. The parents and students did not choose this. You did. And Ms. Superintendent, you were also complicit in this. You made most of your decisions based on what teachers or unions desired for fear of the backlash you might get. You were all put in these positions to, to do the right thing for the students. You failed miserably. You haven't placed the students first. My hope is that all of you will suffer in the same way as students have. But that won't fix any of the damage that you've done. That would be letting you off too easy. Hopefully, the people in this county will get rid of all of you and put somebody into positions that put the students first. Thank you, Mr. Daugherty, for all of your efforts in trying to bring some of these facts to light and make some of these changes over the past couple of years. I would happy, I would be happy to be proven wrong about this, but I'm not. I made the right decision two years ago, and I know it was. So now that I can say from the bottom of my heart, with a clear heart and a clear conscience, a clear conscience, you can all go to hell. Thank you.
Chris Bennealy?
I know I'm gonna need a speaker.
Thank you. Dave Oliverio?
I appreciate the time. I'm representing town Lost Creek as the mayor. I've talked to Mr. Lopez before. What's happening in Lost Creek at the old grade school is happening. What we feared, people are breaking into it, they're breaking windows. We have extra sheriff deputies on duty costing the town approximately $48 an hour, anywhere between $35 and $48 an hour is what the town pays. Now, of course, they're not spending the whole hour at the school, but our concern is that's gonna follow over into the town with bringing undesirable people. From what I understand, somebody made a decision to take the cameras out of the school, the old grade school. My question is, why would you do that before you did something with the grade school? And why would you move them somewhere else and not leave them there? I mean, the cameras help. That way, we know and the deputy knows where to go, who to check. And I have my suspicions of who's doing it, but I can't confirm them. So, the only question I have is, from the townspeople, is why would you take the cameras away from the grade school when you haven't done anything with the grade school? I mean, we're all wanting something done with the school, and we're all working with Amy Wilson, whatever last name is, I cannot pronounce it, and trying to get something done. But the question is, why would you remove the cameras?
And, and we normally, like I said, don't interact. But since this is more of a special proud, you called earlier, we put you on there. And I would say, I mean, from the least, from my standpoint, I'm sure the board, we apologize, because when we spoke to you before, we said that we would not leave you with an eyesore. We would not let this happen. And we did let it happen. And I am upset that those cameras left that building. We did have a break-in. Those should have never left that building. We, they should be there until it's no longer ours. So, I apologize to that. And I'll make sure that, we have put some back, correct? Or are we? We need cameras in there ASAP, and whoever needs to do that, needs to hear that, that they need to be in there now.
I appreciate that.
And anything else you need down there from us, we will, because the worst thing we can do is leave you with the building with all the busted out windows, and that won't happen. So.
And as a town, we're trying to work with you all and trying to see who can get in there. Somebody's mentioning Mortuary and different things. And the town of Lost Creek does not have a problem with a business or anybody coming in there as long as that building's in use. So.
Right. And we need to, now that we've vacated, we need to work on whatever our plan is to, to get something in there. I promise you that. And like I said, I talked to Mr. Lopez when I first heard about the cameras and Ms. Stutler, and we'll get some in there.
Okay. Kevin, I don't think this would take an outbill intent. I probably would. I mean, I would have never thought of something like that. I mean, I don't think anyone like.
I'm not saying it was ill-intentioned.
No, no.
But it was wrong to do.
I feel bad. I would have never thought anything about taking them out, you know? When I went to Focker, would have been break-ins. I don't, I mean, I just don't think it was anything.
I didn't say that it was ill-intentioned.
No, and I didn't either. I just wanted to know what the reason was for doing that. No, and I didn't either. I just wanted to know what the reason was for doing that.
Yeah, and they need, they need to be, but, but in the meantime, I'm, I'm sure you've talked to Mr. Lopez when we rectified it, but, but, you know, just keep calling him or whoever.
Will do.
If he be, and, because we need to make sure that that's taken care of, and like I said, if we talk to Amy, I know they're working on something, or if you have any sort of lead of anyone that may be interested.
Oh, I'll bring it to you, yes.
In that building, you, you bring it to us, and, and if we, if one of us needs to, to go down and speak to your council, we can do that as well.
We might have to do that.
To assure you that our plan is not to leave that as a decrepit, you know, and there's good Jim on there, so there's.
Yes.
It's, it's a useful building for some purposes. I know there's some people looking at it. We just kind of need to expedite that, and if we're going to, if we're going, not going to maintain it, give it to someone else, we need to do it fairly quick.
I know, I mean, we're treating this differently unless, you know, like a delegation, but is there something, because it is our property, it's been brought into, can we pay for law enforcement to, to look at, like, to take some wear off of the?
Well, they, they're paying, you're paying an officer for your city, so there's a patrol around there.
For our town, we're paying for extra duty, and he is patrolling, he is patrolling the school grounds too also. You're talking 15, 20 minutes, maybe. He walked the other day, the whole ground, Deputy Pruitt did, so.
Now, does he have a, my question is, does he have a key that we can give him to where maybe he can?
I don't think Deputy Pruitt has a key.
If we can try to get the sheriff's department a key, and then maybe he can do a, he can do a walk-through, and he's going to know. They should have.
That's a hard read, I'm afraid, still.
We can find a way for, for the sheriff's department to get in that building.
I talked to Deputy, talking to him, and he's also looking at the building. Talked to the sheriff about maybe just having some random patrols. We have boarded up the bottom windows. We have had isolated, there hasn't been major damage at all to the building. We, we think that it's juvenile.
Yes.
Talked about that. We think it was isolated. Danny and our guys went ahead and boarded up the building to make it more secure, because that's what happens if you have a building where people throw rocks, and, you know, that happened in Lumberport, same, same scenario. So that piece of it is to preserve, cover those so they don't get broken, and our maintenance has been going in there also and checking that building. So we're, we're setting in stage now to begin to the process of finding a, a potential person.
Hey, Gary, I know that the police officers have to follow legal state code on entering buildings, and I don't even know if a police officer can actually just walk into that building. But what I'm saying is.
Now, if we give them access.
Look into a legal solution, so they have to.
We can give them access, a key, and he can walk through there.
Okay.
And he's, it's a public, we're. It's a jurisdiction. We are, we are a county entity. He's a county employee.
And we have the right that he has permission.
We don't.
It might be him one day, but he's sick. I'm another officer.
It's a public building.
So it's, you're, you're giving it to the department.
Yeah, we're giving it to the sheriff's department. Now, it's a public building. He can do that, but we'll make sure that that is taken care of.
Yeah, we'll get it.
Okay. Because we don't want it any more than you do.
Right, right, I understand. I understand. That's why I come to you guys first.
I appreciate it.
Because I don't want to be an out in the street that, hey, the mayor's.
Now, we appreciate the cooperation with.
We were talking earlier about like, once we clear the building and if the town is needing stuff, that could be in that building.
That one's been cleared.
We're looking at.
Okay.
So if there's things that, there are different playground equipment or whatever, so if there's stuff the town needs, just give a Jimmy.
Desk and things, we may, you know.
All right.
A small town, everything, a little.
Yeah, every little bit helps, and I mean, that's, you know, financially, the town of Lost Creek is, is not broke, but we're not rich either.
We'll make sure you're included in, you know, in the items that, you know, that we could have done.
Right, right, okay. Hey, I appreciate you all's time and, and thank you for giving me some extra time.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
All right, brings us down to, what's that? No, I believe, I believe there's anyone else. Anyone I missed?
I, I just want to say, we do not agree with the way the last, not you, the gentleman prior to that spoke, but we appreciate you all.
Thank you.
I think that's for a while. I apologize.
Thank you. Brings us down to approval consent items. Is there a motion?
I make a motion to the chair first.
I second it.
It moved and seconded. Any discussion?
Discussion. I, I, I know I asked you about this before, Superintendent Stelwick, there are, and I know they're classified as, as professional development days, but I was under the impression that we as a board are not supposed to pay for food when it comes down to those types of things. So we have, we have my little cupcake up here for 1,500 or 1,150 dollars, and.
Are you on the vendor?
Yeah, yeah, I'm, I'm on, yes, I'm on page two, or, I'm sorry, page three. And we have hillbilly hatchets for 2,670 dollars. So I, I don't, I, I mean, I know we're supposed to, I, I get renting facilities and doing that, but I want to make sure that we're not paying for food.
There was a concern about the hillbilly hatchets. Somebody had maybe had brought that to your concern. That food was donated. We had self-care days for the employees, and they, that, that's what that school chose to do. It was a self-care mental health day for the employees, and the, the food was donated at that. That was not part of the cost. My little cupcake, I believe, was done in a building. They decorated. It was like a decorating, like a painting, cooking.
Cupcake decorating.
Yes.
And it was a supply statement.
That's, yeah.
Well, no, I understand that. No, and I, I get that, I understand, and I'm not going to, I'm not going to quibble over a cupcake. I just want to make sure.
We're not paying for food. And we, that all ran through federal programs. They had to fill out an application. Everything went through federal programs. And each school was allotted so much money for mental health self-care day, and they had to fill out an application, apply. They did vendors if they needed to. It was a process.
Yeah.
To make sure it was approved.
I'm, I'm sure it was, and I'm all for taking care of the professional development and, and using those as our funds the way that we could, federal funds, but I just wanted to clarify and make sure that we're not purchasing to you.
I checked on that after you'd asked about it.
Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Posed. Motion carries. New business waiver of the West Virginia Board of Education policy, 2510, Liberty High School, 22, 23 school years. This is the same waiver that we approved for.
Yeah, the CTE, you have to combine the two portions into one.
Liberty just didn't have theirs ready in time, so.
I'll make a motion that we approve the waiver for the WAV Board of Education, 2510 for Liberty High School, for 2022 through 2025 school years.
It's been moved. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Posed. Motion carries. Brings us down to personnel matters. And they're there with a personnel agenda addendum, and that is the employment of Mary Ann Carvelly, professional accountant, full-time, 250-day employment term. Here's the county board of education. Building effective February 16th, and extracurricular recommendation of James Dawson, Assistant Colonel of Cracker South Harrison, effective February 15th.
I make a motion to approve the personnel agenda with the agenda addendum.
Was there a recusal? I can't remember. I don't remember. It may have been on the last. One, it was. I didn't know if your sister was on.
That's right.
No, I mean, Ms. Messenger, I can't remember if you looked at it to see if. I was thinking, but it could have been on the last one.
Net break is on there as a volunteer, so I refuse that stuff.
Okay. It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Posed. Motion carries. Board member comments, Mr. Godfrey.
I'm, I'm happy that we're run optional with the mask on, and I'm, I'm loving it, and unlike we discussed before, it is optional. People who want to wear it should not be bullied if they're wearing them, and the people who don't want to wear it cannot be bullied for not wearing it. We just need to treat everyone with respect, and it's, it's optional, but I'm excited.
Ms. Messenger.
No, I think it's a very good meeting. I, I do have to say, comments like, like, like that were sent here is, those are bullying comments, and I sure hope that's on the United States system, and that, that's the beginning of that thing, so. I'm just happy it's optional, and want to wear them good, and if you don't, teach it, it's all the same.
Mr. Hope.
My comment is. We are, in the past, I fought for President's Day to be one of our holidays, and never seemed to happen. Then last year, we had President's Day off. Now this year, we turn around and we backtrack, and the kids are off, but our staff is working. My thing is, we say President's Day, we're taking all the presidents and lumping them together. We're not asking for Ronald Reagan Day or Jimmy Carter Day, and they all end up being a holiday. We lumped them all together to, you know, and ask that there be a President's Day, there be no school and what have you, in their honor and what have you. But at the same time, we went and, when they put in the, when the government put in, we're celebrating Martin Luther King Day, you know, I have no problem with that. You know, the contributions made by, you know, Dr. King and everything, I, I think that that, that's great, but I think that we should also stay the same step, and that we honor our presidents and have President's Day. The federal government recognizes it. So I think we as a state should also.
I think we address that with calendar, correct?
Yes.
We, we address it.
I'm trying. I mean, I don't care if we add it, David, if school's supposed to get out June 3rd, what's the difference of school getting out June 4th? You know, President's Day would be a holiday, the same as Dr. Martin Luther King also. I mean, if it means that, what is that?
So you would not be opposed to get that one day, if that's made the.
That's fine. I, you know, I mean, what's the difference? Because, you know, for one day, okay, because like I said, there's people working in the federal government, you know, they're off.
They get off vacation.
I just, I just like for that to be, and, and once we do this, once we do this, and put it in the calendar, I think it should be in the calendar from here on out, saying.
Well, once we do the calendar, I want it to stay the same from here. You know, I like the calendar to not change from.
I have to agree with him, like, obviously, from Jane Dally, my perspective there is, I mean, they're booked a year in advance. I mean, and it doesn't matter, you can have kids missing school, because all the people are up there, most of them do have Monday off of President's Day, so they bring their kids in. And so, I, I, what Doug is saying is a fact. It's a three-day weekend.
Exactly.
Holiday across our country, just like Martin Luther King and, and that, that, that's a lot of things we will take.
So, I, I mean, I just, I just feel like I just said, we had it last year, you know, we dangled, carried out, we had it, and then we took it away. And we, now, like I said, there's people that, you know, can't do anything or, you know, go anywhere because, you know. See, every day's a holiday for me, but that's the difference.
Is that it?
That's it. I'm done. Stick a fork in it.
I, I don't have any, I don't either. Is there a motion to adjourn? Is there a second?
I'll second that.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Children of peace, go in peace.